February.
I mean, I want.
Yeah.
I'm just want to remind the commissioners. If you've had any conflicts, interest or any exportation communication on any of the items, please note that at the time of that item. And then we'll move forward on the first few items. We did not get the minutes in our packet, so we will not be doing the the three minute packets. And then we're going to do a amendment to the agenda on a couple of items. First, due to some scheduling issues, the vacation twenty four oh two and record of survey twenty four oh seven from new business, we're going to move that to right after items. That app can have some conflicts and didn't get noticed till late enough, so we're going to move that item. And then being the first of the year, we're going to need to appoint a new chair and have that item. So I make a motion that we amend the agenda to they keep vacation to survey twenty four oh two and record survey twenty four oh seven to after the review of the minutes as well as appoint chairman to the council the twenty twenty five year.
Phil, do you feel satisfied?
Yeah, maybe we modify that motion to approve the amended agenda as posted prior to the meeting.
Second.
It wasn't.
We ran it outside and put it online like within the last eight minutes.
Okay.
They were like, we need a chairman.
The vacation record of survey on it.
Okay, to do verbally. Yeah.
Okay. And we'll have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're none, motion carries. But with that, the first item would be to appoint a chair.
I move that we appoint Chairman Lyons for another year as chairman.
A second.
All right, I will accept that. And we have a motion and a second to appoint me as chair for twenty twenty five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?
I was able to get on, by the way. This is Dana.
So you have Dana. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Back to Mr. Chairman.
Long time no see. Yes, yes, I will accept the responsibility and duties. Okay, there are no preliminary development plans to review. So we will go to the new business item that we moved to this, the vacation twenty four oh two and record of survey four oh seven. And we have.
Brent.
Belleville. Okay.
Yes, Bill.
And so you'd like to let us know about your application?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
If you give your name and address and go ahead and present your application.
Okay, my name's Brent Belleville with Belleville Construction. My office address is seven forty five North Ralston Street, Meridian. We propose here, so my clients bought the first lot here two or three years ago. This will be a secondary vacation home for them. Bought the first lot, couldn't get the house that they wanted on the first lot, bought the second lot, lots eighty one, eighty two, Aspen Ridge number two. After they had the lot spot, house was designed, we realized that we were going to join both lots of the record of survey. Through the record of survey came out that there was the sewer that went in between the two lots. Started working on the engineering to do the vacation. Got all the engineering completed. We've been working on this since February of twenty four. We got it turned in, I think back in October is when we're using Crestline up there. Basically taking two lots out of Aspen Ridge, turning it into one lot. We will only have one water connection, one sewer connection, so we will eliminate another sewer connection and water connection. So we only have one in there instead of two. Again, secondary home for clients. House is big enough, couldn't fit it on one lot, bought two lots. All the engineering has been completed, everything's been turned in and preliminaries, I think, are good.
Okay, real quick, since we moved that over, I forgot to do one quick thing. This is a public hearing. So with that, I'd like to make a motion. We open the public hearing for this item? Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Sorry about that, Brent, just a little cleaning up that we had to move it on the agenda here.
No worries.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Brent?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
Just Bill Poncini attorney, city attorney. Just for purposes of housekeeping, would somebody please take notice of the testimony that was just given by the applicant? So that it can be included in the record of the public hearing?
It's allowed.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now commissioners, any questions for Brent?
Is there any in that sewer easement, is there any piping in there or is it that what's the plan there for this sewer easement that you're vacating?
So the sewer easement, so basically the way the thing sits is back behind that, I don't know if you can kind of see it in those pictures, back behind that, there's three lots. Lot seventy, lot sixty nine and lot sixty eight. My, I actually own lot seventy, Aspen Ridge two up there. Lot sixty nine is a vacant lot, lot sixty eight has a house that's on it. We will basically leave those pipes in the ground. We will terminate that connection that runs in between lot eighty one and eighty two. And we will move that to the north end of eighty two in there and then run it down. We will establish a new easement on the north end of the property and run it down the hill and tie it back into the city sewer in there with a six inch. Right now, currently, it was supposed to have three four inch lines that run down through there. There's actually one four inch line that runs through there, so we're going to just basically cut that connection and leave those pipes in the ground. Unless we dig them up through construction, then we'll pull them up. We will extend that new six inch, we'll tie all three of those lines back together. We will move them to the north end of the property and then down the hill it will go and tie back into the to the main sewer line that runs up through Majestic View Drive.
And the ten foot sewer easement is completely on.
Yes, that new sewer easement will be one hundred percent on my client's property, which will be lot eighty two there.
And the sewer district had no issues with that?
Sewer district had no issues with it.
That was only, yeah. Any other questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you, Brent. We'll go to staff report. Meredith?
So this is again, as Brent said, a request for a vacation of a public utility easement that exists across shared lot lines to facilitate a lot combination to eventually fill a structure that did not fit on the original lots. They have done all the engineering work to relocate that easement. As we don't really want to bring it to a hearing until we can figure out that the sewage is still going to go where it's supposed to go. So they've been working diligently with the sewer district and staff to make sure that that should be. Morgan's engineering letter was hiding in a file that I couldn't find. But she does speak to the process of making sure that the new easement is placed on the proper location on their record of survey, similar to when we did that drainage easement vacation earlier in the twenty twenty four year. So there are some additional comments and processes to make sure that we actually cite that easement over where the sewer line is relocated to rather than putting it on the map and hoping that we get it in real life. Other than that, it meets the dimensional standards and should have good normal retained access and all the usual things. When the house is built, Spring Mountain Ranch and Aspen Ridge have their own design review committee, so we will not be at design for the house because that goes through their approved design review committee. But the site plan and the floor plan looks pretty normal for the larger scale homes in the area. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
All right, any questions for Meredith? All right, with that, Morgan?
Meredith mentioned, I have some comments in making sure that the sewer easement is relocated appropriately. And then my typical digital data, digital data standard for the record of survey plot. And then I just had such a planning their stormwater will meet our drainage management guidelines. And then I wasn't sure if a geotechnical report was performed for the property. I believe the plat, the plat says this one needs that, but that's the building permit condition and that their driveway doesn't appear to meet our our standards. So just some comments on how to address and what didn't meet our standards from what was shown on the the stormwater plans. That's all I have.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for Morgan on the engineering?
Get a surveyor out to put to her where it says on the drawings or just is that it like puts that in contractor? How do you assure that it's it's put where you want it to be?
Typically, I'm unsure of the sequencing they have with the sewer district. But in a normal process, they install all the infrastructure and then they finalize like their easement or their plat. I know there's ways to go around that with financial assurances or if the sewer district has another method. But just maybe, yes.
Just for me.
Any other questions for Morgan? All right, with that, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Anybody online or on the phone that wish to comment? Is there anybody here in the audience that wish to comment regarding this application? Nobody here? All right, yeah, public comment, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we go deliberation and close? Seems pretty straightforward. I think also it's going to go into engineering to make sure there along as a sewer district. Make sure you know what goes downhill. I think everything will be happy. With that, I make a motion. We close the public hearing on this item?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? All right. We have two motions for this.
You.
Yes, there's the vacation and then the record of survey.
So I move that we recommend approval of vacation twenty four oh one.
Sorry, oh two.
Oh, two, okay, oh two, to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the vacation. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then I move to approve record of survey twenty four oh seven with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the record of survey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Brent. All right, now we will go to the consent agenda. Item, I did not see, do we have the Lenora Street item?
You did, that ended up being added yesterday. And if you'd like to pull it off for me to walk you through it, I'm happy to do it.
I I was going to ask that same thing. I didn't want to like rock the boat, but I was really curious about it, so.
Good, that's fine.
Yeah.
It's a very quirky one.
Okay, let's pull off the record of survey twenty four fourteen to address separately. Any other questions within the consent agenda, commissioners?
We approve the consent agenda, consent agenda.
Modified.
It's modified. Record of survey twenty four fourteen.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda with modification has been approved. Okay, Meredith, if you could go over the record of survey real quick? Oh. Okay, for anybody wondering on the consent agenda, the items that have been approved are record of survey twenty four eleven at nineteen oh eight Pilgrim Cove and nine sixty one Conifer Lane. The record of survey is right here. Twenty four twelve at thirty nine oh four Wolf Creek Court and three eighty nine Whitetail Court, or excuse me, Whitetail Drive. And the record of survey twenty four thirteen, twelve fifty five South Sampson Trail. And we, the approval of the finding effects for the record of survey twenty four ten at sixteen seventy nine Crestline have all been approved.
So Lenora Street, this little project is quite unique. There were two remainder lots from an old right of way and then a small, almost original McCall first edition parcel located in a pretty steep section of east Lenora Street, although we don't have a six to west version, so this is located kind of above the Thibby's Place. First start. So after many, many years of sitting with nothing having been done on it, a new buyer purchased them this last year and understood that there was a water main running along the shared lot line between these two very small lots. And spoke with staff pretty extensively over the last year to understand what's the process for moving a water main that already exists in the world. And so they're doing quite similar to what happened on Aspen Ridge, but it's not flatted. It's just an existing water line. They're doing the process to combine those lots to allow for a house that isn't like, what, six feet wide was what was initially possible? So they will have to move that water main, working with the public works department, doing the same process of they move it and then they record the record of survey to identify where that water main has been moved to on the new side area. And then prior to issuance or application for any building permit on the site because of the steepness. They or a future owner, if anything should go belly up in the process, will need to do a geotechnical report so that we can understand how to make surroundings safe since it is based over there. But the conditions of approval for this have it so that the geotechnical report can be provided in the future by a different party so that they can at least complete the water main relocation and record of survey part. Because that can be quite an arduous process in itself and it's cleaner to separate the eventual building permit from fixing the lot lines. So this will probably be very helpful to the city as well to get it done and not have a water main going under a place that is not very helpful. So that's this one. It does qualify for a record of survey through the simple lot combination process. But we just had to be very clever in our initial engineering to figure out where do we put the water?
Okay. And what are the the lots around it? Are they similar in size to that point two acres?
They are, they're a little bit bigger and wider. This one ended up being the result of selling a sliver to one neighbor that made it smaller on one side and then having that old vacated right of way from way back in the day as a separate parcel that was owned by the same owner of these two chunks. So this should create a pretty similar sized lot to those other ones that have the houses on them at this point.
There's a house on six oh six currently?
Nothing, there's nothing there. There's one next to it and on the other side of the two lots.
Those lots are empty.
Correct.
All right, commissioners.
Water going.
Sure. The water is proposed to be moved to the eastern property closer to the eastern property line, of course, with some distances so that it's not on the property line. And we're running a hydraulic model to make sure the main is sized appropriately. And they do want to reduce the size of our normal water main easement. So that's part of the whole site planning, planning effort is to show where the footprint of the house would be on this record of survey so that any eaves or anything don't overhang into that reduced easement. So that's the the challenging part. They're going to need civil drawings that identify the plan and profile of the water main, the excavation, how deep it's going to be. I put some comments in there for when they build the house, they they'll need a stormwater report. Yeah. Standard record of survey information that we need digital drawings. And there was some confusion of the information that I had reviewed. There was some some record of survey documents missing. So some of my comments have already been resolved after talking to the applicant. It just wasn't in one of the attachments that were initially submitted. So let me know if you have any questions.
Any commissioners, any other questions for staff? I think I'm comfortable to move forward. I don't know, and see a little bit more of the details. Open for a motion?
I move to approve record of survey twenty four fourteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve record of survey twenty four fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, motion carries. All right. Okay, I want to hold business. This first item, design review twenty four twenty three shoreline twenty four ten scenic route twenty four oh eight was was the one that we not going to be continued. It's
Beacon.
This one is can be, okay. Well, this one is going to be continued to the February fourth, twenty twenty five meeting. Make a motion. We continue this to the February fourth meeting.
Second.
Yes, okay, yeah. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, true. And let's see. Okay, I see. Okay, moving on to the next item. We got design review nineteen fifty five and shoreline nineteen twelve. This is a public, oh, wait a minute. This is not a public meeting, okay. With that, do we have Dave Jackson here who present?
Yeah. Dave, Maria.
Okay, yeah.
I can give a pre-surveys review if you would like.
Wouldn't be great. No, you can go right ahead.
So another unique project we have today is a review of back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. There was a designer view at Fort Worth Central Railroad to have a two unit residence or duplex built. One of the units is a local housing unit. And it's almost done. We're on the last condition of approval prior to final occupancy. When we discovered that there is a wall where there was intended to be a fence. We pay very close attention to what happens in the design as it's actually built out in the wild. And so we noticed through Morgan looking at the grading plan that there hadn't been engineering for the wall that existed. And then we realized it was not supposed to be a wall. It was supposed to be a white picket fence. Normally, a plan change like this is considered a minor enough change that it can be approved administratively at the staff level. But from a design standpoint, because it fronts such a popular pedestrian area and the lake, we wanted to make sure that the design itself is reviewed or the difference being that it's a cinder block wall is not a white fence. Your planning and zoning design nitpickiness. So we wanted to bring this item to you guys to determine which route to final compliance and issue it's a final occupancy. Would it be appropriate? Because it felt a little bit too important to be done at the staff level, given that the staff felt that cinder block wasn't great, but acknowledged that it's probably costly to replace a cinder block wall. So that's the background of this project. I've included both the as-built pictures from the building inspector's visit to the site and the initial design drawings, the epitaphs and then planning and land planning and architecture. And we will ask any questions. You'll see that small deviations like the exterior color, those things can differ from time to time as long as they're generally within the McCall design aesthetic. It's really just this gray area of what is a wall, what is a fence, doesn't matter. Leave that up to you all.
Yeah, and for my part, my name's Dave Jackson. I was the builder on the project. And I got to admit, I didn't even think twice when we were trying to figure out what we were going to do around the perimeter of this. I was working with the homeowners and we were talking about different things. One was how to attach the fence to the top of the wall. Another was where she just wanted a bench going along there. She she's kind of, she was kind of concerned, you know, once the sidewalk is installed there, that people would be able to hop up on there pretty easily. And she was worried about the fence, if someone was climbing on the fence. You know, and ultimately she liked the idea of having a bench there. And so we, you know, we came up with the idea of just extending the wall up and creating a bench. And I got to admit, I didn't even think about the fact that I needed to bring it back to you guys and ask for permission on this. It it would be, it would be tough to change for sure. It's an eight inch concrete wall, but in my opinion, I think it looks good myself like it is, but it was, those are sand and cinder blocks. They're not just the generic type that try to create like kind of an exposed aggregate look. But anyways, this is what was done. Ultimately, we are hoping that you guys will just try to approve the deviation as constructed.
How tall is it on the inside from the deck to the top of the wall?
It's like, including that cap, it's like eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches.
Yeah. It's just sort of a bench. It's basically two cinder blocks taller than what the wall would have been.
With the, okay, that's who you're just going to ask. So it's so it's actually lower than what it would have been with the picket fence because they can see there's a the base of a wall would have started as it was with the steps.
Right.
So it's, that's almost less of an impact.
You can see I zoomed in there. That's that's the behind height.
How tall was the picket fence going to be?
Uh.
About three and a half feet.
Yeah, and one of the things that the homeowner, I mean, we were talking about trying to match the railing up above down below. And he just ultimately decided that that wasn't going to be what she wanted, so.
On your schematic, the upstairs railing is black. Is that too white?
Yeah.
That's eventual sidewalk is going to be right up against the wall, correct?
Yeah.
Morgan, you put that the drainage and everything, it shouldn't be too different.
I mean, the only change is I don't know if the footing was designed for the additional height since it was only supposed to be about two and a half feet tall. Um, the only change is I don't know if the footing was designed for the additional height, since it was only supposed to be about two and a half feet tall. Um, and then I think there was drainage installed properly. I had some comments on that, on some differences that occurred during construction. Um, but that's part of our final acceptance of the project.
footing and the drainage?
Correct.
But does it sit on a footing?
Yeah, it does. Um, and it, and, uh, the actual retaining part is the same as it would have been whether we extended it up for the bench or not.
Is there reinforcement in this?
Yeah. It's got the, um, it's built just as per plan. Just the footing and, and, um, rebar in the wall.
What, what is your drainage behind that, that wall?
Um, well, we've got a, we've got a drain line, we've got a a large collection basin on the east side of the property. And, um, where the, all of the water from the um, gutters and off of the house and surface drain all goes into that collection basin. And then there's a pipe going across all of this, um, over to another collection basin on the west side of the property. And we've got surface drains, two surface drains down into that pipe um, along the backside up against the wall. I think that the drainage, um, is actually set up just fine. All, all of the water from the whole lot is all piped into the drainage system.
So on the stairs, there's two columns on either side and they kind of extend out, I don't know, four inches or whatever. Does that go into the right of way or are they within the property still?
That's on the property still.
Yeah, the outside of those posts are right on the property. I purposely didn't put the wall back just a little bit just to make sure.
Are there conditions of approval you're looking for on this as far as verifying the drainage or any?
No, I think that would still be wrapped within final engineering approval, um, that Morgan does kind of iterative approaches as small things like this get tweaked within the construction process. Um, and this one, we've been working on it for um, so there have been a few tweaks, um, already. Some Morgan's quite used to checking to make sure everything's good. Um, and that's still captured within the final occupancy process, but to issue final engineering approval need to make sure that this is the last version of what is to appear in that location. We could take the last look and then say, no, you don't have to do more, or yes, you have to do more. It's not a position, but I think that'll include looking at, just making sure that engineering is correct and to hold up that way, but it's, I don't know if it's four feet tall, um, based and then making sure that that drainage is built to the proper plan specs so that it won't water onto the future sidewalk or go under into the storm drainage system, et cetera. Uh, but that's pretty normal activity for Morgan to conduct with John Powell, the building official, um, in the beyond process, so. The teeth remain for that to be figured out.
I, I noticed the the cut in the wall, your, your entry stairs and all that's not the same as what was initially approved outside of it, the picket fence and that. I was just curious, is there, is there some reason?
That, that was just a, a preference of the homeowner. Um, she did not wanna have the steps going right down in front of that door, cause she wanted a little sitting patio area right out in front of the door. And she liked the idea of it being off to the side, so it wouldn't interfere with all of that.
So it make kind of a little courtyard.
Yeah, it's just, um, I mean, they ended up just putting pavers or, um, flagstone out there. And they just created a little area right in front of the lighting glass door. Um, and the rest is just, uh, drain, drainage rock and
snowmelt drains through the pipes. Their collection, the backside of the wall, the patio side of the wall.
Yeah, well, on the, yeah, on the backside of the
cinder block wall.
Yeah, on the house side of it, okay. Yeah, there, we got two surface collection drains right there. And there's one all the way to the east and all the way to the west that are also collection basin.
So, okay, well, I think the main thing is if we're okay with the design and has built construction for the wall versus half wall and half fence. So.
Sure, not too concerned with deviation of, or of the upper red.
Yeah, the colors can be changed.
Colors.
Yeah, as long as they're within the, or, uh, anything crazy?
My OCD is going a little nuts, well.
So just, just talking about the future, they do decide to that it's not tall enough for them, they want more privacy because there's not much privacy still as you walk by. Um, that's probably part of the point of having the picket fence was to create more privacy. Um, they wanted to do that, then they would have to come back here to do that process, or is, how does, would they be able to just do it?
For a fence in the shoreline or a fence slash wall modification in the shoreline typically apply for a new administrative approval if the project is done. There's no more design review, no more new structures, not a residential addition, et cetera. Um, and then that would get looked at by me, the administrator. And the height limit for fences in this area is four feet and we would probably do from the ground elevation of that fence or of the sidewalk. So I, I think that might leave, what, ten, twelve inches left? Yeah, so it'd be probably a bit of a process. But, um, that one would be administrative and I think the only real option to keep going higher if the cinder block is kept is to add one more tier. I would, unless you wanna put like a six inch tall white fence on top of it.
Figure something out.
Yeah. This is purely one of those beautiful design gray areas where there's no shell statements in the fence code, it's all just should be quaint natural material, yada, 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 but not out.
If there is any, uh, hollow, they can continue some hollow, uh, from it down the park.
Alright, any other questions? It's I think we do a whole lot of changes to it. It seems to fit with what half of it would have been there, it's not a huge amount of difference, so. Open for a motion? If you need a motion, correct, on this one to approve?
Yeah, it's a new option. Can you provide us guidance, direct, direct staff? I think the motion could be to either direct staff to be number one, or direct staff to read number two and adjust the grammar of or three.
I think we have those in the pack.
I have no suggestions for three.
So we don't have them? We don't have those in the packet?
Oh, shoot. Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of unfortunate because the picket fence would actually block more of the from the schematic would block more you into the house.
Yeah.
I hear where you are, so.
Yeah, I, um, I mean, I think ultimately it's, it it just creates a barrier so people don't hop up on their back porch. That's mainly what they're worried about. During the construction, people were walking up and just looking at the house all the time, but, um, I think ultimately this is
So just for argument's sake, he won't have you put a gate up the steps for another modification, right?
Um, she's talked about that. But, but, um, yeah.
It would probably end up being a, a normal texture swinging gate that's a small enough modification that it's not a swinging cinder block. Well, that probably wouldn't come to scene.
They are concerned about people walking through. It's why they decided to, that's, that's wait and see how it works out.
Can we make a motion?
So I move that we I'm just gonna say it, do number two on the move on, you know?
Be a motion to approve the deviation as constructed. Okay.
Second thought.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're none, it is approved. Oh.
I probably, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Good one, both. Okay, um, motion still approved, alright, thank you. Okay, um, moving on to land unit development twenty four oh three subdivision twenty four oh seven. I review twenty four twenty seven and scenic route twenty four ten. To be determined Viking Lane with the St. Luke's Memorial. How's the hospital? We, um, who do we have here for that?
And a number of other wonderful characters. Greg Tankersley might be online, we have Andy Leydlaw as well. So Steve, would you like to begin? Oh, there's Greg, hi Greg.
Who would like to present?
Uh, this is my curio, do you hear me?
Yeah, Mike, they're just gonna, applicant's gonna do the presentation. Uh, we'll have public comment here in just a little bit.
Sounds good, thank you.
Also, I make a motion to the public hearing with this item.
Second now.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You opposed? Hey, hey.
Mr. Chairman, Member of Commission, Staff, Mr. Pontney of Steve Millman, seven oh six oh first, uh, it's my privilege to be able to present, uh, this, these applications to you, uh, this evening. Staff of the, uh, St. Luke's McCall Hospital Foundation and the Hall Memorial Hospital District. The property in question is currently owned by the foundation. The hospital district has an option to acquire a one-half undivided interest in the property which would be exercised upon completion of, of the process that we're in right now. So the two entities will wind up as equal owners of the property for purposes of proceeding and, and development. The project, um, and the proposal before you is to construct thirty eight two and three bedroom, uh, townhome, uh, units on the property. All of which, uh, will be workforce housing. And, um, even, even more impressive from my point of view, all of which, uh, will have rent structures which will be tied to income levels. To try to assure that the units are affordable to the entire demographic range of healthcare workers and if there were vacancies to other eligible, uh, uh, local, oh, layers as provided by our housing publics. The, uh, project will have no short-term rentals. Some confusion about that in the comments, but that's what the application provides and that's frankly, they are going to be considered local housing units, what our housing fund also required. The property consists of four point eight acres. Uh, it is, um, yeah, thank you. It is, uh, on Mission Street. And essentially wraps around the Wildwood condominiums here. Due south of the school district property from whom the foundation in fact acquired this property. This property is zoned R eight. So the proposed density is exactly what is allowed by the zone, there is no variation for that requested. The, uh, project would be accessed from the north and the south. From the north by means of an even bed by the school district. And on the south directly off of vision with a through private drive connecting those two access points. The, uh, property has been approved by the Payette Lakes Water and Sewer District for up to thirty nine units. So it is, uh, as proposed compliant with the approval from the Payette Lake Water and Sewer District. You have essentially five applications in front of you, which is sort of the package that I think you've become used to seeing. Uh, one is an application for a planned unit development, preliminary plan approval, application for a subdivision, preliminary plat or design review, scenic review and for a development agreement. I want to emphasize that the intention of the foundation and the district is that these will be rental units. So one might ask, why are we doing a subdivision plat if that's the case? And that is, uh, for two reasons. One, to give the foundation and the district a maximum flexibility as we go forward uh, on allocation of ownership of individual units. And why might that be necessary? Because it's envisioned by the parties that these units will be constructed over time as funding becomes available. And maybe necessary depending on the relative funding to adjust the ownership, um, from the original fifty fifty to a a percentage which reflects the actual investment. By having the individual planted units, it gives us a greater flexibility to accomplish that. But the project is intended to be, uh, thirty eight rental units, not for sale. The, uh, we have a number of folks present tonight, um, that have been very involved in the project. Uh, Greg Tankersley from Preslon Engineer has worked on, uh, all of the engineering issues as well as the initial FAA approvals uh, relative to the, uh, airport approach. Andy Leydlaw is here, Andy is chairman of the, uh, hospital district and also has been extremely generous with his time in helping develop the architecture and working with, uh, Iron Town on the modular components of these units. These are hybrid units, uh, some portion of which is modular and then some portion of which is custom. Which really, uh, enhances the ability to get units up and, and occupied, um, much faster than fully custom built, but provides the same structural. It's custom. Bill Copo, Chairman of the Foundation Board is here. Amber Green able to describe really what is a dire need for workforce housing, um, for St. Luke's McCall and the related healthcare clinics and facilities that we have fortunately available to us. Uh, Jenny Rumali, who is Executive Director of the Foundation is also here. So a lot of people available to comment and also to answer questions, should you have any about the project or, I'm sorry, about the project. What you are looking at is a, a site plan, it's a little bit busy, but it shows you what you envisioned here. And the thirty eight units would be spread over ten triplex and fourplex buildings. The intention is to phase the project from the north to the south. The part of a water delivery would come from the north. The sewage would flow to the north, so it lends itself to some phasing. I did that Morgan is comfortable and the sewer district is comfortable as far as assuring that infrastructure is in place for each phase as it comes online to be standalone relative to the development as a whole. The the buildings have been intentionally angled to soften the appearance and and soften the what otherwise would be substantial sort of flat front look. I think effectively so in Andy working with Iron Town. The phasing would be done on a funds available basis. However, the application contemplates that at least the infrastructure for phase one and the at least the first fourplex would be completed within twenty four months after this approval. As to plating, the proposal contemplates that the first phase would be final planted within twenty four months. And that the entire project would be final planted no later than forty eight months after the preliminary approval. Can we go back to that site plan again? Of the phases are usually.
That one?
That's one of the epic phrase lines.
Little dotted ones.
Okay. And essentially the phases, the first phase includes these twelve, but each one of them would be built within the first twenty four months. And then the phases just moves south through the project to Mission. And again, that will be funding dependent. This that there would be sufficient funding to meet the commitment of the of the first phase and and the and the first building. The funding of development presents a number of amenities as required by code. One of which is open space nearly three times the amount of what's required. Our code requires in the PUD twenty percent of the PUD, the open space. This project proposes just less than fifty eight percent. That's accomplished, as as we've discussed before, that's accomplished by custom units using zero setback on town home units. And by pulling the units in a little bit tighter to the center helps that enhanced open space. A second amenity, if we can scroll down. Would be a picnic kind of gathering area down in here. And that is kind of work in progress. It's dedicated to that. We need certainly as we go forward and before we get to the city council to finalize those plans with Sir Wolf and the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee as to what would be on there. And to what extent it was publicly accessible, which I think frankly, the intent. And so that plan is is developing as we speak. And we intend, we intend to engage Kurt in the committee to talk about sort of options for what we do in that area to provide a safe but attractive gathering and picnic area. As you see here, the city pedestrian pathway runs right here to the east of the project. The proposal contemplates that would be connected to the project through pedestrian pathways. So this area could be very attractive also for people going up and down the city. Pedestrian path. A third amenity is an internal pathway system that connects Mission with the city pathway here, runs up to the north, all the way up into the school district property. And runs right along the boundary of the condominium property out to the north. So it provides a significant amount of connectivity. Those pathways would be available to the public and would provide an attractive and efficient connectivity between the existing city pathway and and mission. As as amenities are defined, an additional amenity is that there will be no short term rentals under our code that is considered an amenity. And of course, the fact that these are all workforce housing units is also considered an amenity. We'll continue to work with staff as as recommended by Meredith as we approach the council to really pin down how the workforce housing status will be locked in. Preliminary discussions with the district and the foundation, but I need to finalize those would be that they will be deed restricted. Consistent with the model we established with the apartment project that Mike Cormac Chia is pursuing. That would restrict occupancy to workers who qualify under our local housing plan. But not rents. However, in this case, the owners intend to have the rents, as I said, tiered in relation to income. The the plan is very much consistent with our comprehensive plan. Under land use goals and policies, policy two point two is to promote compact walkable developments. Two point three, support infill and redevelopment in the city limits and areas that can easily connect to services. Specifically referencing new residential units on vacant property. Policy five point five is to encourage local housing options and walkable and connected residential areas. Policy six point three is to require require clustered residential developments with smaller building lots and larger open spaces. Under housing goals and policies, policy two point three is to manage short term rentals to mitigate adverse impacts and expand the availability of local housing throughout McCall. So this project checks a number of those boxes. And is certainly consistent with not only our zoning ordinance, but our comprehensive plan. As you are used to hearing on these projects, these town home projects, in order to put projects like this together, there are some code alleviations, as is allowed by the planned unit development ordinance. These have all been reviewed and addressed quite specifically by Meredith and the staff report. And we appreciate the endorsement of the alleviations in the sense that they further some very fundamental purposes as far as the land plan. They help in in the preservation of existing trees. They help to maintain and maximize open space. They facilitate footprint lots and zero setback lots. So the alleviations were listed in detail in Meredith and the staff report. I'll quickly touch on them. Obviously, minimum lot sizes, we're used to seeing those when we do the more footprint lots and the trade off for the minimum lot size alleviation is the maximization of open space. Setbacks in very specific places have been alleviated. I want to emphasize that along the boundary common to the Wildwood condominiums, we have minimum ten foot setbacks, which we believe are code compliant. So that is not an alleviation. And I think there was some confusion. So along the Wildwood condominium boundary, we are not proposing to alleviate setbacks. A couple of places, there's alleviation, obviously, between the buildings and a couple of places between the units because they're common lot line units. And and the setback from the private streets. Again, for any purposes that Meredith mentioned in this staff report. Lot coverage, as is always the case with these types of projects is slightly more than is called for in the ordinance. But project wide is only about twenty percent. So it is a very favorable lot coverage percentage. As you would expect when you have almost fifty eight percent open space. Garage frontages are another alleviation, but there are no frontages on public streets. So and the units all sort of face into each other. So there is no impact externally in terms of view from adjoining properties. Private open space again is always an alleviation when you're doing condominiums or town home projects. Your code has a hundred square foot per unit open space requirement. That works fine with traditional gridded subdivisions when you're doing condominiums or townhomes. It doesn't work. Again, the trade off being that the common open space is significantly greater than than what is required. Right away, the width for the private street that runs through the development, and it is a private street, is forty feet instead of sixty. That's become, as Meredith pointed out, pretty common in similar developments and has proved to be effective. And again, allows the units to be pulled in more, open space to be maximized, maximized and and trees to be preserved. The application contemplated as to the parks requirement that we might have to ask for an alleviation as to that requirement. And 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 the philosophy there was to try to preserve every single available dollar here to be used to build these units. And but in working with Meredith, I think we've shrunk that alleviation significantly by including the pathways and that picnic gathering area under the parks requirement, which leaves us only about point two acres short of the total acreage which would be required, which would be somewhat over an acre under the ordinance. So alleviation requested at this point is simply to allow that point two acre reduction in the total parks requirement as opposed to alleviating the entirety of the requirement. The I'd like to have Andy come up and address the design features on these. It's been an intriguing process to listen to for for me. Count, I'm the designer. And the sensitivity to the site. So Andy, if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving us a review of the design features.
Elevations.
Floor plans, I guess, let's start. I'm Andy Leydlaw. I'm the chair of the hospital district. Enjoyed working on this and trying to get some going in our community for medical purposes. Obviously, our climate is a challenge to build in, and we see all sorts of half completed projects buried under stone and stuff like that. And so we were interested in exploring the possibility of modular construction for this. Research has told us that the modular construction is very high quality. Not necessarily cheaper, but very advantageous for our climate due to the speed with which it can be constructed. So the foundations would be constructed by our general contractor. The the units would be set. And then the siding and the roofing would be done in place on site. The Iron Town, the manufacturer we've been working with out of Spanish for Utah. And they researched the widest thing I thought they could get up here, which was sixteen feet. So that's what our module is based on. Also recognizing our climate and the people that'll be using these inhabiting these structures, they felt it was essential for every person to have a garage. So basically, we have a what is a tandem two car garage. It's basically sixteen feet with the spare cut out of it and forty two feet long. And that's either two vehicles or vehicles and storage, sports equipment and stuff like that. So this is a main level of a fourplex. They're all fourplexes. You've got the garage door and the length of the garage, and then you enter and go upstairs to the main level. And on the main level, it's a an open floor plan, dining, living, out to a a deck, a covered deck, an open kitchen, powder room, walk in pantry, et cetera. And then as Steve stated, the mix is two and three bedroom, which is the sort of the the hospital has available to it. Some studio type units, so the need is more in this two and three bedroom area. So it's a mix of of two and three bedroom. And so the internal units are two bedroom. And the external units on the floor plan on the fourplex are three bedroom. That is because the bedroom, the third bedroom requires an egress window and it can't be buried with another unit pushed toward it. Okay. So we did some multiple site plans exploring. Do we do a stack three high? Or do we do detached garages and only go too high? And in multiple site plans studying this and, you know, the volume of the buildings is not unattractive at three stories high. And the the savings and the amount of trees and open space that can be created by this compact footprint, we pretty much all voted for this approach of the the three story floor plan. The siding is a mix of three manufactured attractive wood type products in harmonizing colors. The roofs are a low slope single ply roof and all the roofs drain to the back away from garages, sidewalks and that. And so off the backside is envisioned kind of a landscape to dry creek bed that all that drainage goes into and it's attractive all year round. But it just gives kind of a natural attractive flow for water and snow sheds. So all that kind of roof runoff and snow sliding and all that will not have to be dealt with than any of the pedestrian or park. As I mentioned, the the siding and roofing will be applied on site. And one advantage of that is by applying the siding on site totally obscure the way the buildings are stitched together and their modular nature. Anyway, we think it's attractive and functional and efficient.
Was it metal roofing?
Pardon?
Is it metal roofing that you're doing or a comp?
Uh, no, it's a single ply, a EPDM or
Rolled roofing?
Something like that, yeah.
Thank you, Andy. So.
Oh, could I make one other? Just while I'm up here. So in our neighborhood meeting, we had a lot of dialogue with the Wildwood condominiums. And that's obviously a major public interface. And they were concerned about the pathway along unit seventeen to twenty. Along the property line. And we agreed to delete that and these plans that already been submitted. So obviously, they still show that pathway. But yeah, right in there or runs right along the property line. And they would rather preserve as much forest and filter as possible.
On the construction of the units, are they going to be heavier snow load since you're going to be retaining the snow on the roof?
The snow load is the same no matter whether you retain it or shed it. It's a hundred and fifty pounds a square foot.
Okay, so there's no extra requirements for a modular. It's got anything?
You know, you're designing for it. That's the easiest place to keep it, most out of the way.
Does all be reviewed under the applicable, I think, code.
Do they have some CPNRs that, you know, if they have to shovel them that? I guess you just got to go off the end of them. I guess you just got to go off the end of them, as far as the middle ones anyway.
Yes, we have submitted draft CCNRs even though the intention is not to sell them. So maintenance upkeep would all be provided by the project owners initially if they ever were conveyed then by an association. Andy made a point I failed to make is that the, I think. Buildings are designed to hold snow, not to shed snow. So that minimizes concerns about the possible of shedding snow across property lines. The. I also overlooked it overlooked and didn't acknowledge that Meredith here who's worked. Diligently on behalf of the foundation to negotiate the original land purchase. And as part of the working group, the joint hospital district foundation working group that really has been putting in hours to try to make sure this project is not only compliant, but. But works for its for its purposes. So. This is a pretty classic example of a private public partnership interface to try to step up and address what you hear during public comment from Amber Green is is a significant. Problem based in filling current healthcare positions in this community. And I I find it to be very exciting and. Very happy to have an opportunity to be involved in it. Happy to stand for any questions at this point, should you have any?
Are these buildings? I guess moving forward, not not specifically the phasing, but are the buildings anticipated to be built in four unit block or whatever those blocks are?
Yes. As you see the buildings on the plan, those buildings will be constructed. To get all or none.
Right, she wouldn't do one.
Yeah.
Anything else, second? Commissioners, any other questions for Steve at this point? Or the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Meredith, staff report.
So I think Steve did a fairly, fairly detailed job of reviewing the application as it was submitted. I will note the little adjustments to the length of that pathway revision. I think that'd probably be like about 100, 105. Looking at that when I get in that part of the staff report. A little bit of history, I think we are our newer planning and zoning commission members. This property was created through a record of survey and rezone a couple of years ago that the school district did in order to begin their workforce housing project on the northern. Property site. They, in that process, did receive the approval and indication from the sewer district that service could be provided to meet the R8 zoning, which has been one of our. Years in local housing for the last couple of years. So they also planned for the connectivity of the internal streets. Because it's been determined that accessing either of these properties exclusively off of North Mission Street would probably be pretty complex, given the topography when you're coming up and you see the camp pine would slide where the. Themselves down the hill, we're in that kind of region. So this site was planned to connect into that school property. When that one's eventually completely built out, the phasing of how we're going to get the edge of the pavement on the school property to this property is still a matter of conversation with staff, but the infrastructure, i.e. the water main. And the swimming have been stubbed to the property line on the north side of this parcel. The application is for multifamily housing in general as a use, which is permitted, I write, with the R8 medium density residential zone. The style of development, as Steve stated, is for the individual units to be townhome, having this function. From a land use standpoint as an apartment complex, and that's due to the financial. Relationship between the hospital district and St. Luke's. The nuances of that are Steve's problem to deal with, not mine. But this facilitates the opportunity for one group to manage like the actual property and the maintenance of it. As well as manage the rental process on a unit by unit real property basis instead of having. 38 units or similar to the apartment project we saw earlier in the year, 130 units that are all within one system. So this just separates it into an individual property at a time. Which I guess works better for the hospital district than apartments as a style. The other things of note on this is it is subject to the same development agreement that occurred during the rezone for the school district housing. So it does envision the installation of appropriate infrastructure for the site to serve multifamily housing. So typically, when we review development agreements, we do like to see what is envisioned by the initial person to rezone enacted on that site. As we get into the property itself, the street will be an extension of the so named Viking Lane. Which was decided by the school district, it's the first grader of the street. So fun fact, if you invent a street, you get to name it. Within reason.
And the color of the sign is blue and it's green?
Yeah. The color of the sign is blue is a private street, you're correct. So here are the shapes of that property parcel. It's still being recreated at the parcel level in the mapping system. So if you did any homework on the assessor's website, it might be updated on the assessor, but it is not updated within the state of McCall GIS system yet. So it does wrap around the existing Wildwood condominium sites. Previously, this area was zoned civic, which could have allowed for up to 90% lot coverage and change. So this is actually going to result in a reduction of overall lot coverage based on the zoning change. The density proposed does match that for the R8 zone, so it's consistent with what's expected there and it doesn't require any kind of. Density bonus through the local housing program, which makes the inclusion of workforce housing 100% voluntary in this process. From the design perspective, we are simpler units compared to what we're used to. But again, when we're working on workforce housing, the goal of the community is to get the cost down to the lowest it can be. So there's been numerous discussions throughout the city on is modular construction even feasible in this region, region, because we haven't seen much of it before. And staff has spoken with many modular construction design firms to understand the process. And it it does seem to make sense in the region. This is the type of development where these pieces will come in on trucks and then be sited and assembled onsite rather than. Panelized or stick built construction for the custom builds. I'm not sure if those will be modular custom or something else. But in any case, the way that those designs are reviewed is still to meet the building code that is applicable, to still meet the energy efficiency codes that are applicable and the snow load. And all of the normal construction standards, it's just typically built offsite and brought in and assembled. The. It is a planned unit development and subdivision plat, so when we get to the deliberation and discussion stage, we'll need to review the criteria applicable. Relating to any detriment to public health safety and general welfare. And then in the quick review of. Amenities, again, two amenities are the minimum requirement for a planned unit development. And amenities are supposed to be the balance with alleviations that are requested in that process. As we're trying to create developments of higher densities that don't necessarily turn into cookie cutter boxes and. Everyone gets a square, but rather maybe there's preservation of open space. What we see in circumstances like this are, well, I need to be alleviated from the side setbacks, so I plan to provide additional open space rather than an enormous parking lot that might be more than the site actually needs or. I need to make my building a little bit higher than the side setback might allow, so I'm going to provide this kind of amenity that's better screening. So it's a give and take to try and make the design that's proposed fit within the area. So in this case, the amenities that are proposed are more than double the amount of open space, actually triple the amount of open space of standard planned unit development when it within the zone. The picnic and gathering area for the use of currently the property owners, but with discussion, it could become accessible to the public. In that area to the southeast of the site. The 38 voluntarily restricted local housing units, however they are restricted, would be considered an amenity within the community. Given the housing crisis that we all are aware of. Internal pathway system can be considered an amenity because it is not marked on the pathway's master plan. And then not specifically identified as an amenity, staff appreciates that short term rentals will not be permitted within the development. Based on the plat and the application. So even if the property is sold in the future, the process to vague any restriction on short term rentals would require coming back to the city and requesting amendments to the CCNRs, the development agreement and the plat itself. Which would probably be quite complex because I don't really assume we'll resolve the housing crisis anytime soon. But that gets us to the requests for amenity or obligations. As Steve stated, we do have requests from the minimum lot size. In townhouse, townhouse style developments, it is allowed for that calculation to be average as a whole. Because what you have is just the footprints of each lot being what you're measuring lot coverage or minimum lot size for. So you would end up having a 1,000 square foot. Minimum lot size and that you think in your head, oh, where am I going to put my yard? There is no yard. It's just the walls, it's just the floor underneath the townhouse. So as a whole, when we figure in the street dedication. As well as the common area open space, it brings the average lot size to almost 5,000, 4,344 square feet. Which seems to be enough and should result in the preservation of trees and some of the natural features. You probably noticed that the renderings for this project are quite flat. So you're going to have to put on your imagination hat and put put yourselves on that site where there's the big hills that the cross country team likes to run around on before they end up in the cemetery. So there will be major challenges to fitting these buildings on the site itself and making sure that things can be navigated around. And putting these buildings together right, rather than having. One and one and one separated by 10 to 15 feet will probably result in a lot cheaper grading costs and a lot better preservation of all of the slope and topography in that area that. You treat with a lot of respect. The setbacks adjacent to that private street. A typical front setback in the R8 zone is usually 20 feet. But because they have the snow storage allotted and the drive is long enough as opposed to having the building right up against that snow storage easement. They should be able to fit within the, I believe it's 18 feet of the. Viking Lane area along with the snow storage area. See what else? Lot covered in excess of maximum allowed per lot. So that is taking account of the building footprint, which we count as 100% of lot coverage. And then a driveway is counted at 35% per square foot. So if you have one square foot of driveway, it counts as 0.35 square feet of lot coverage. So because the entire lot is taken up by driveway and building, there isn't open space per lot. But again, it's on the periphery of the entire set of buildings. In normal, single family style development, we like to see garage doors that do not exceed 50% of the street facing wall. So that you have a welcoming pedestrian environment, but because all of the. Pedestrian amenities are scattered throughout the site and as long as the garage doors are facing the interior of the development. It's generally acceptable to have that standard deviated from because we're not going to be looking at nothing but garage doors from the public realm on the pathway system. A reduction or elimination of private open space per unit. Again, because these. Buildings are going to be surrounded by the open space rather than have small private yards or garden areas. That is where that request comes from, and it'll probably be more consistent with the existing topography. And existing landscape and maintained by, at this point, either St. Luke's or the hospital foundation and a property manager. Which can be a little bit more aesthetically held together within a whole development. And then the reduction in private drive roadway widths from. Minimum of 60 feet to 40 feet. They have identified that there should be enough room for at least the minimum 12 feet of snow storage and 10 foot drive aisles that we like to see. On internal roadway accesses. And then they've identified some snow storage areas and drainage basins that I believe Morgan will be able to talk about in more depth over time. This has been seen to be successful, should you orient the buildings in the right direction. So this looks like it should be yet again. It'll probably be the most topography that we've seen this style of roads exist on, but that goes down to the engineering and all of the math that they get to do. Other than that, we're still working on exactly where the lines of the phases can work from an infrastructure standpoint. We've sent an initial. Request out for the hydraulic model to be performed to see how many units can be added initially or how many units can be added at a time before the full amount of pipe infrastructure needs to be installed. Again, I'll let the engineers do their math. And then on the parks provision and pathways, linear parks concept, we have in the past been able to count. The linear feet of pathways within the interior of the development as a parks contribution. On this development, because it's being adjacent to the railroad pathway, the future mountain bike jump park close to the school and the fact that they're trying to develop exclusively workforce housing. And speaking with the Parks Director and Michelle Green about our community development director, we determined it would. Good to at least try to count the linear parks within the development as parks dedication. So let's consider that picnic area a dedication before we proceeded in the route of saying alleviate from parks entirely. It's important that members of the community have green space regardless of your socioeconomic status. For a local housing development, we try and recommend being as good of a partner as we can be while still providing what we need to to the future residents. Um. Now storage for the private street. Should be located in little parcels and future easements will need to be indicated on the plat to facilitate this. But it appears that the other snow storage areas are located outside or adjacent to the private right of way. I think Morgan noticed that one of the snow storage basins creeps on to the railroad pathway area, so we might need to work out the shape of that a little bit more. Perfectly. And then. Finally, there is a code section that says that if a a shared driveway access is more than a certain number of residential parcels, then a private street needs to be developed. So this project does propose that. To access the eventual 38 units proposed in the application. That I believe we've received 12 written comments in support of the application. Four letters of concern related to snow storage between the Wildwood condominiums, related to. The alteration and loss of neighboring natural features and concern related to some forms of access from the Wildwood condominium units that I didn't quite understand because their access comes from North Mission. But I could not find that conflict within the site plan. And then I did receive. These no more written comments after the 3pm deadline that you all have a copy of. That I stand for any questions.
One question, they did talk about the pathway. Being reduced. And are the current numbers with that reduction already?
No, it is not, so it'd be reduced by about 100, 120 feet. It'd probably be down.
And it looks like you're going to get a dead end parkway then between buildings 16 and 17. Part of the. As well as the retention. Spiders picnic area.
And those things you have seen before, it's. And those things um, you have seen before, it's usually where you'll see like a little bridge. Going over the soggy pond, it might not be accessible in the winter. Um, but you'll see. Spaces that can do both. We don't have the vines for those. But it's not the most terrifying thing.
That brings up another question. All of our city pathways are cleared in the winter. Will these also be cleared?
I'll leave that as a question for Steve.
And there was some contradiction that talks about a private picnic area and Steve has described that as public. So I would like some clarification on that.
There were comments from Morgan talking about some changes on the pathway or extensions. Uh, I have a question on the district housing site and what development agreement and what things that they are doing. As part of their work and how this development may tie into that. Seems like there's, they have their concrete pathway that does the loop de loop. But I don't know where it goes after it goes by the building. Does it go further out with, within the site as part of their site plan?
Um, that one, we were looking at it yesterday and it. Goes further out within the site and then it touches to meet um, the western, almost meet the westernmost. Or of the access to this property, there's a blank space where there would not be a sidewalk or a pathway unless. Get back down here, should go to the one that actually has the pathway on it. Ah, yes, so. Morgan, was the end of the school district pathway close to? You might can see where my mouse is.
I put it in my comment letter too, like a little sniff of it.
Um, so there's a gap between the concrete pathway on the school district site and the beginning of the pathways on this site. Um, but we did talk about, hey, once this is developed and this is a private interior street. How common in McCall is it to see a sidewalk or pathway adjacent to every single private interior street? We went, wait, that's not very common. So as long as there is pavement um, that a pedestrian could use, that I would leave that up to this commission to determine whether we should ask. To see if there can be pedestrian connectivity perfectly to tie into that sidewalk system. But it is not a code requirement since it is an internal. Design of two different individual minds creating pathway systems.
Is there a certain level, I know they're gonna try to phase it in, I know it's gonna start at the north with this first few, so that road has a loop. Is there a certain level that we need to require as they're adding buildings that that road has to be completed? So there's not a dead end there or a hammer thing that for the fire department. I mean, should we have a certain point of, okay, if you're gonna have the fourth, fourth flex, fourth, orplex. You have to connect the street. So do we have that in C?
Morgan can get into that in the. Your review. You want me to answer that?
Um, yeah.
So um, one of my comments is that the phasing really needs to be engineered more. Um, like right now, they're just lines on the paper, but it doesn't really describe how like water mains will be stubbed. Remains will be stubbed. How they're setting up the next phase and access is one of those questions too. If it's over a hundred and fifty feet, you have to have a turnaround for fire access. Um, and that all needs to be worked into the site planning for the future phases. Um, what we have here is more what it's all going to look like, which is helpful for. Modeling and traffic and stuff to figure out what the total impact might be for the whole when it's completed.
For the fire department turnaround, that's like if they just build that first phase through. Number eight. Dead end. Turnaround, great.
Um, I know there's ways to, I, I think there's ways that can be, that can be alleviated. Um, that would have to work with the fire district and what they would allow. Um, so there's some more work to be done on how these phases get constructed.
They probably, if there's a fire hydrant down the corner, they just park in the circle and right hose.
Yep, so they give the option of a cul-de-sac of a certain width by. Pull off with extra pavement. When we sit in the preliminary flat phase, um, some of those questions. And um, but others of them think it's important to get deeper into the engineering. Typically, we can do that prior to the council, but if you as the commission have questions, you're allowed to request more information.
Are they gonna have more grinds with the slope? No issues with the height if we have any of the slope areas in there?
No, so I think when you get back into probably the rebuttal stage, it would be good to ask Greg Pinkersley to speak about. Analyzing the site to meet the FAA requirements. Uh, they did a pretty much down to the inch analysis because there are parts of this property where um, vertical structures cannot exceed. Pretty low numbers of feet. Um, so they've figured out where these buildings should fit to stay under um. Both the height limit for buildings as measured from the more restrictive of finished floor elevation or um, existed. Pre-existing grade um, prior to construction. Um, as well as stay under sometimes the more restrictive building height limit. Um, and they've been pretty strategic in doing so. I think the, the bigger question will be how, how much digging will need to be done and what will they find in the ground?
We don't see.
Figure that the idea of what happens if the cemetery goes beyond where we thought of it, but we'll figure that out if we have.
But we don't see any.
Groundwater.
Potential issues with at least our thirty-five foot height with that. Okay. Any other questions for Meredith before we go to Morgan? Hey, Morgan?
Hello, um, so I believe my letter's in there. Um, it's a pretty standard letter. Uh, we did, I'll just go in order from how it, it's in my letter. So the first up is the traffic impact study and rights of way. Um, a preliminary study was submitted and it is estimated it'll have a minimal impact to the traffic. Once this is constructed on Mission Street and the other roads that were analyzed. Um, the most um, concerning part on Mission Street is the bike and ped connections. Because it is so narrow and with the hills that are there. Um, so improving the pedestrian and bike facilities for this property and connecting them. To like what the school district has constructed, what we've constructed is. Um, to help provide other modes of transportation to allow for safety. Um, so that kind of goes into that conversation. The school district having that stub of sidewalk to the property line, the southern property line. Um, I threw it in there as a question on if they've thought about connecting that to help enhance that since that takes them to the intersection. Of Mission Street and Stip Night. Um, so that was a suggestion to just help reinforce more of those pedestrian and bike connections. Um, for Mission Street, uh, the main concern is the site distance for that southern access. And that just needs to be evaluated to make sure there's no obstructions. Um, it's a safe intersection. Um, and then we, as the design of Mission Street, want a, at least a five foot bike lane. Uh, the school district provided one, but they have a much larger frontage where I think the frontage on this property. On Mission Street is maybe less than a hundred feet. Um, so it's, it's not very practical to build a five foot bike lane for a hundred feet. Um, so just showing it on future plans that there will be one there so that we don't put other things in that space. Um. Let's see, so that's kind of the traffic. Um, grading drainage and stormwater. I didn't get a stormwater drainage report, but the site planning shows there's many detention areas located on the site. That look like they've been sized to some, to some manner. Um, that this final sizing is typical, typically done in the final engineering stage of the project. Um, and I did have some comments as Meredith mentioned, there's one detention pond that leaks onto the city property. Um, so making sure that there's no drainage offsite. All meets our drainage management guidelines that are set out. Um, but they have plenty of space to do that. Um, and then upgrading their drain, their grading plans to show the grading for the pathway and the buildings. And what will fit there. Um. So for water, we did run an initial hydraulic model for the project and the loop to eight inch main will provide adequate flows and pressures. We did ask our consultants to run additional. To provide additional information on if phasing of the water main could be achieved and what that looks like. Um, so if they're only building eight units at a time, can they build the water main? Eight units at a time as well and still get the proper flows and pressures. Um, so they are analyzing that now and I'll be updating them and that will all go into that phasing plan that I kind of spoke to earlier. Um, on how these phases are going to be constructed. Um, we do need at least one other additional hydrant about midway in the water loop. Um. But that's an easy addition. Um, and that is most of my comments. I have some comments on the subdivision plat that are pretty standard. Um, and that'll get refined as well with the project. Science, please let me know if you have any questions.
There was some comment and to try to make sure, however, we can verify with the drainage. That it doesn't affect the Wildwood condos because they kind of sit down or surrounded and that. Might flow to them, so I don't know if there's extra ways to make sure that's gonna be.
Yeah.
Not happen, I guess I should say, so their drainage doesn't all of a sudden create a bunch there. And is there enough snow storage? I know they have the retentions, but. Where they plow on all the roads to, is that all just the ponds there or the retention areas?
Combination of those twelve foot um, adjacent to roadway, snow storage easements. And then those retention pond areas with the amount of open space that they have. Um, they would need to identify by exactly where they're putting it, but there is similar to when we see home designs. There is enough square footage of open space available um, to design adequate snow storage area throughout the sign and engineering process.
And they'd have to take it there because I can see some of the like. You know, there's this row of eight or so parting lines along that. Health part of the road, if they just push that all over, it's gonna be right on the boundary where it's gonna melt into the Wildwood. So is there gonna be some guidelines that can't do that?
Yeah, there will probably be, um, once they identify where that pile belongs, that one being that snow storage detention area. Um, on the. More detailed version of the plan, um, and it'll be where your wonderful skid steer driver picks it up, turns around, gets it down elsewhere.
Also, I'm allowed to drain onto adjacent properties over the historic rate, so. It'll be an improvement. Um, and they can.
Make sure that was addressed because there was a couple of different concerns, it seems like on that. I can snow with the topography there, it does kind of lend itself to go kind of that direction.
Yeah.
Good.
Is the eight inch water line, so the, the. School district, they stub water in, and so there is an eight inch there, so they'll just. Add tie onto that and go forward.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they stubbed it all the way to this property line. Um, there's actually a T that they installed, um, because the future school district housing has another loop farther to the east. So that kind of benefited both properties.
And then would the waterline loop through and tie back into the waterline in Mission Street or?
Okay, it's proposed, yeah, to go all the way back to Mission Street and tie into that.
I'll note for true that um, I did think as a condition of approval because we usually don't for preliminary plats at the planning and zoning commission stage. Um, but based on those questions about snow storage and drainage, you would be um, within reason to request some kind of more detailed preliminary. Stormwater um, snow storage and grading plan prior to, for example, city council or um, another meeting. Um, so that information can be made available to staff to look at and more scrutiny at this time. That's abnormal for this normal process, but it is a trend that's been expressed regularly by the public. Not a bad idea.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for Morgan or staff at this time before we go to public comment? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will go to public comment. Um, I want to remind everybody, you'll have three minutes to make your comments. If uh, somebody has already talked prior to you and you're basically saying the same thing, if you could just say you agree with that speaker and not restate it over and over. We'd appreciate that. And then I need you to state your name and address prior to discussion, so. Uh, we will go to anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application. Who is? Eva, are you there?
There I am.
Me?
I, I am here, hello?
Okay, yes, if you'd like to make a comment. Just name and address, please.
Yes, Eva Prince, three one seven A North Mission Street, Wildwood Condos. Um, our union, the secretary for our executive board there. We appreciate having met over the months with, with the foundation and trying to come to terms with this uh, much needed. Development. Um, we of course are um, a bit concerned. We've gone from an R four, which we are to an R eight. We are now surrounded by thirty-eight units of thirty-two feet in height. We are single story or double story units. If you look at where I appreciate removing that bike path, but to uh, see between units seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty. It's a very close boundary to the Wildwood units. Uh, uh, three one seven A B C D. We will have people in, on decks looking down from thirty feet above. Down into our yards directly unless we create a strong, natural tree lined buffer. And removing that bike path or that pedestrian path can only assist in maintaining our privacy. Um, I know you've talked about this and I don't know where this happens in, but for the. We know we're going to be developing from north to south. If we could cut that road in, in phases, it would contribute to the quality of our life in Wildwood. To not have to grade the entire roadway from north to south to Mission over by the water slide of the camp. Would contribute and maintain our quality of living. Who knows when the funding will happen for phases two, three and four? Look what happened to the school district. We have a blighted, cleared off block with no funding for subsequent. Um, development, so we would love this, it's going to be gener- uh, created in phases. Keep the footprint and the uh, the, the change to our lifestyle as minimal as possible while keeping with your city codes. We appreciate the open space. If you look at the open space though, the open space is between the units to be developed and the bike path. There's very minimal open space between Wildwood condo and the, and the um, three and two story houses. The elevation has me truly concerned and the footprint, I would hope that we can keep the elevation of the building site. As low as possible as it is now. Wildwood condo will be looking at a wall of thirty foot development buildings. Um, I know it's necessary, but. Um, do not raise the elevation as you engineer and go to the engineering, the slope and topography. We've got to keep this low as is, we're gonna be surrounded. Thanks for the opportunity to um, enter my question, my comments. Um, please refer to our neighborhood meeting summary and um, I look forward to our continued work with the foundation.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment? May need to hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Brandon Gallegos, three O one North Mission B two, also in Wildwood Condos. I uh, submitted. My. Online, so you should have uh, my concerns in writing. Um, I too appreciate and, and know that this is uh, something that needs to take place in McCall. Uh, I, I appreciate that, you know, it sounds like my two concerns are being addressed. I just wanted to clarify a little bit of, of. my two concerns are being addressed. I just wanted to clarify a little bit of of what um I submitted in writing. Uh, and it sounds like Morgan had uh has already looked at the same thing of connecting the pathway. So that there's access because you know, not only us, but uh people come up from Camp Pinewood and access that area through those natural paths right now over to the McCall pathway. So you know, that that's something that we use uh as a family and like I mentioned too, a lot of the neighbors use that access. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose that. Um, and then uh the same thing with snow storage, you know, I know that there is some of that that's going on the plans right now, but I it it needs to be looked at. Because if you look at what we are dealing with right now, just between, you know, phase one and phase two. You know, there's there's it's not practical to what is shown right now with just that twelve foot down on the southern portion of this development that just the whole thing is a whole up north. That all needs to be looked at. So I appreciate you guys and uh thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anybody else on the phone or online that wishes to comment? Hey, is there anybody here in the audience that wished to comment regarding this app?
Thank you, Amber Green, Chief Operating Officer, Chief Nursing Officer for the hospital. My address is ten forty Chris Lane. Uh, thank you P and Z Committee for considering the application before you for um McCall Memorial Hospital District Housing Project. I also appreciate the assistance of the city employees who have helped through this process. I'd like to express my gratitude to the McCall Memorial Hospital District and St. Luke's McCall Foundation for understanding how the lack of available and affordable housing in our community affects our ability at the hospital to continue to provide quality healthcare services to our community. Their commitment to forming a partnership to work for a solution for workforce housing for our team will not only benefit our ability to retain and recruit quality healthcare workers, but its true intent is to serve the individuals that are visiting our community and those who seek care from us. Over the first, over the past few years, we've struggled uh to hire individuals to essential roles. Um, I could go on and on ultrasound technician, emergency department nurses, our operating room nursing staff, uh medical assistants in our in our clinics, um registration individuals, laboratory technologists. Uh, these openings uh have required us to either cut back the hours that we're offering essential services. On occasion diverting patients to other hospitals outside of McCall. Um, or hire expensive contract staff to fill these positions. Uh, many of these staff are double or triple times um the amount that it costs us to employ um just uh an individual that would apply for a permanent position. We have had on average uh time to hire one position up to a hundred and fifty days. That's five months for us to fill one position at the hospital. Um, our applicants that we get want to live and work in McCall. However, uh the majority end up declining these positions due to the lack of availability and affordability of housing in McCall and our neighboring communities. We have made investments to improve our ability to offer housing to employees. One of them has been purchasing local buildings or houses uh to aid in this effort. We have learned though that although this provides immediate solutions for our staff, um it is not assisting with the more widespread housing issues by addressing overall availability in our community. We are excited to partner with the hospital district and the St. Luke's McCall Foundation in a solution that will increase the inventory of workforce housing homes in our community and provide an affordable option to our employees that will allow for rents based on adjusted adjusted gross income of our employees. This will prove essential as we continue to strive to provide essential healthcare services to our community. Thank you for uh considering the proposal.
Great, thank you.
My my name is Bill Colpo, fourteen twenty five Clement Road in McCall. Um, I'm the McCall, St. Luke's McCall Foundation Board President. Um, and I'm here to support this uh project and it the presentation to you. And hopefully you uh agree with us to move ahead with the project. As I worked for the hospital for uh as an employee, as a director of medical imaging for approximately twenty years. Uh, I experienced what Amber just described to you in trying to hire people. I had positions open for two years um waiting for somebody to apply that could move here. Um, and we had housing for them. We didn't have housing at the time, so that two year process required me to do my director's job as well as scan patients. Um, that was not what I needed to be doing at the time, but we got through that. And now I'm uh supporting the foundation as uh encouraged to develop this project in a timely manner and to also um raise funding for the project so that we can move ahead. Thank you.
Great, thank you. There anybody else here in the audience wishes to comment?
Good evening, Carl Lindsmeyer. I'm a manager of nursing and patient care services. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Uh, I will agree with but in all reality, surely covered from head to toe uh the needs of the hospital. Uh, our hospital staff staff worked tirelessly to ensure the health and wellbeing of both residents and visitors. However, the high cost of home rentals and ownership make it incredibly difficult to recruit and retain these essential workers. Many employees are deterred by the lack of affordable housing options. And those who do join us often face long commute in portable areas, which can impact their work, life balance, and overall job satisfaction. That's something that we find it's very difficult for people to really uh jump into the community and be considered community members because they have housing insecurity. So by having housing options that are long term, it allows them to be established. Uh, and when they're commuting from long distances, it really is dissatisfaction. Uh, they leave uh before their time or against their will. So uh in conclusion, I should urge you to consider the long term benefits of the project. Supporting our healthcare workers with affordable housing is an investment in the health and stability of our entire communities. Thank you for consideration.
Is there anybody else here in the audience that wishes to comment? Okay, great.
My name is Rachel Shin. I'm at two twelve, your third uh unit number four. Um, I'm here representing St. Luke's as well, and Amber and Carl have kind of covered everything that I wanted to say, but I will add uh not to be too repetitive. Um, I'm the human resources business partner for St. Luke's. And I get to have a lot of these one on one conversations with our staff that are trying to relocate here. And I, you know, it can be hard when you're trying to just like find a unit like we'll find somewhere to squeeze you in, we'll find somewhere to squeeze you in. And I myself relocated here in June. Um, and I was able to find a cabin in Donley that was way above my pay grade. And I knew because I was born here in McCall and I I just came from the Wood River Valley that I just needed to get here because I know how these economies work and then I would meet the amazing community here and find somewhere to live uh that maybe I could afford a little bit more. Um, so that's what I tell people when I have these conversations with them is like just get here. The community is amazing. It was in the eighties when we had enough housing and not enough jobs and it will be now when we you know, have enough jobs but not enough housing. We'll figure it out together. And that's what I tell people and I really have seen the community come together and I just appreciate the thorough and thoughtful process that everyone's going through here to make that happen. Um, I really think that this housing would impact our ability to maintain um a really, excuse me, a really complete um healthcare situation for the entire community. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to comment? Anybody else? Okay, is there anybody else on the phone or online that wishes to comment? Again, if you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Last call for anybody to comment here or on the phone or online.
Can you help?
Okay.
I'll have one to read.
Read, okay.
Um, my name is Allison Salyer. Um, I'm a St. Luke's employee and I'm a homeowner in Wildwood Condos. Um, I've worked for St. Luke's for almost twelve years. During those twelve years, I've proudly given each paycheck to the foundation. I wholeheartedly support the foundation. For nine years, I worked at hospital registration and and um um making ends meet was tough. So I know what it's like um to live here and struggle to make ends meet and to have um have a home that um that I can be proud of, that I can live in, that is just like a roof over my head. So um I want to make it clear that I really support the foundation and this housing project. And as a homeowner, I do have concerns. Um, I'm just going to echo Brandon Diego's comments that he made by phone. He's my next door neighbor. Um, he mentioned um concern about the snow, um the snow and then the drainage. So just echo what he said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, once again, last call. Anybody on phone, online, or in the audience that wished to comment? All right, with that, we will close the public comment. Oh, yeah, you have one more item to read. That's right.
Okay, so received at, I believe, ten minutes after the meeting began from a Kaylee Turpin registered nurse at St. Luke's. Uh, I'm writing in support of St. Luke's McCall Workforce Housing Project. A very abbreviated background on my complicated housing journey. My now husband, partner at the time, and I moved to McCall in spring of twenty nineteen after he accepted a position at the McCall Smoke Jumper Base. I quickly took a job with St. Luke's and started my new nursing job in July of nineteen. Fortunately, we were able to secure basic housing through the Forest Service, which consisted of a basic dated six hundred square foot modular unit designed strictly for seasonal and summer living back in the seventies. Over the next four years, we bounced in and out of our seasonal living accommodations, rented a room from friends, met with a handful of realtors, made multiple offers on overpriced homes, explored every plausible option for housing from trying to buy property to scheming about the feasibility of building a house through a kit. We talked about relocating out of state on a near weekly basis, but couldn't imagine giving up on our dream. I left McCall twice to travel nurse, complete with gut wrenching goodbyes. Eventually, after about four years of searching, we managed to buy a still overpriced home from a retiring nurse. The only reason we secured our purchase was because she took pity on us and didn't allow her listing to go public. Housing is a loaded word and it's one I will never take for granted again. To me, when I now hear this word, I think about how desperate I felt without it. I think about how lonely I felt when I had to leave my new home twice to work out of state. Finally arriving on the other side, having secured housing means going to bed at night, feeling confident about investing my time and energy into building a community of friends and coworkers. It means feeling ready to make my dream of family a reality. It means striving for a promotion at work or volunteering because I believe in giving back to the place where I thrive. If you help provide affordable, secure housing to someone, you grant them the promise of a future. To them, it could make the difference between staying or moving. It can mean the joy of a family and sinking roots into their community or taking their skills on the road to some other place that doesn't have their heart, but does have a roof over their head. I'll end with this. I hope you truly understand that our need for workforce housing does not reflect any lack of motivation or work ethic. Most of the people I know at St. Luke's McCall who need housing assistance are some of the hardest working, most optimistic people I know. We went to school, trained hard and worked hard every day. Having a respectable, clean, reliable, and family friendly house to come home to with our heads held high at the end of the day is priceless. Yours truly, Kaylee Turpin.
Okay, great. And with that, we will have a comment. Steve, you want any rebuttal or?
Uh, Steve Millman and I think Greg Tankersley has a couple of things he'd like to address on the engineering side.
Thank you, commissioners. Greg Tankersley, Crestline Engineers, three twenty three Diamond Heart Lane, Suite C here in McCall. I just noted a few of the questions that you guys had during your um roundtable discussion about the project and wanted to address um some of those as well as talk about where maybe some of them are already identified in our plans that we provided. Um, the first one, uh there's some conversation about connecting the sidewalk into the school districts project, which um if you review our site plan on the eastern edge of the property, we actually do connect into one of their proposed sidewalks. It's not constructed yet, but we provided for that stuff out to to allow for that connectivity. Um, there are some concerns about removing the pathway in between the development and the Wildwood project and uh you know, that is just something that we're entertaining based on what we heard from comments from the neighbors. If it's important for that to stay there, it doesn't necessarily have to go away. I think some of the pathways within the project are a little fluid. Um, they've been intentionally shown in locations to preserve trees and open space and other things like that. So trying to to do our best job to to find good spots for those. So um, don't uh don't really be so hung up on that. We can, we can work to come up with solutions to make that work for you guys. Um, there were some discussions about the fire turnaround as well as the phasing of the infrastructure. Um, and if you review the site plan that we provided, I think it's exhibit two probably, sorry, exhibit three. Um, we clearly identified the phasing boundaries within that uh sheet. We also went um as far to identify what we call the phased um infrastructure boundary on there, which is specifically shown on the sheet as well. So the intent of the phased infrastructure is to um you know, not necessarily build all of the roads, water and sewer and string out that capital bond, but to phase it in a way that it can be big enough to get some, you know, efficient costs as you know, make it attractive to contractors, but also not make it so big that it's it's unattainable. And um, so we've talked about phasing from a sense that we would like to build half of the roadway um that would cover the first sixteen units from the north. Um, that would include, you know, building the road, paving the road, um installing water and sewer to that location. And that's identified right here. Phase one infrastructure boundary, basically this line. And it includes the first sixteen units. So the the infrastructure would be built at once. The units themselves would be built as funding becomes available. So the intent is to build this whole network here within the first phase of the infrastructure and then with the second area of the infrastructure, the remainder of the roadway would be connected into Mission Street with all of the water and sewer and other utilities associated with that. If that's possible. You have a question? Yeah.
But I mean, scroll back up, just looking at that. So that last, let's say that south unit.
Just right here.
Yeah, that if that was going to be built in that at a cutoff, how was that with the fire department?
Yep, so next thing to talk about, so this loop right here provides a loop or fire department turnaround, right? So we we have that there. Um, this road can be up to nine hundred feet and provide a turnaround on it. So this currently, the school doesn't have a turnaround, I don't think, on theirs. Um, so this comes down through here and now we provided a turnaround for all of this. It can have up to twenty eight units with just one access point or the fire code.
That turnaround distance from that bottom unit was acceptable for the fire.
Hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So we can go up to a hundred and fifty feet without having to turn around. It's just to try to keep the project affordable in the first phases with all intentions of connecting it through and not having that dead end. Um, so the the phasing of the water and sewer sap is working with your consultant to figure out if it can be um connected, you know, a dead end main for a short amount of time. Um, whether or not that'll be acceptable, we'll need to figure that out. There were some discussions about how it would be preferred that maybe the project infrastructure was built in a phase. If we can't phase the water line, then we're going to have to disturb a lot more of the property in the initial phase because we're going to have to grub out the road the whole way. We're going to have to. We're going to have to install that water line all the way through there to create that connectivity. So from a disturbance standpoint, it's preferred to stop it as short as we possibly can. There's some discussion about the FAA analysis. During the due diligence process for the foundation before they purchased the property, we went through a pretty extensive process where we identified five specific sites on the property. And we worked through the FAA and we actually have documented approval of those sites outlining building heights to make sure that they don't approach into the airport approach surface. The most difficult part of the property or where the most constrictions are are at the southeast corner because that is the closest to the airport with the highest elevation in the property. But we did go through an exercise, we made the worst case scenario. We identified that we didn't have any problems with a 35-foot tall building. We don't have a building in that location with this final plan, which would be roughly in here. And our proposed buildings are, I think we said 32 feet. They're not, they're not up to that 35-foot limit, so we're even below that. I think in some of the more recent stuff we submitted that we might not have available, we actually show that on our drawings. So we don't have that available, but that approach surface kind of cuts right through here at this corner. And we could talk about airports all night, but I'll say to you guys the heading. These units here, there's a discussion about grading and concerns about how the grading is going to work. Believe it or not, the majority of the site is relatively flat. If we come to about down here to, if you scroll down, please. Right in about here is all pretty flat. Everything's tied pretty close to the ground. We're not looking at really any grade changes. The challenges come as we have to tie into Mission Street from that flat elevation. So we'll need to start to build the site up a little bit. And you can see that on our grading sheets. And then these buildings are going to be a little unique in a sense that the garage level is going to be cut into the hillside. Going to take advantage of the architecture and the construction of the building to tuck it into the hillside and minimize the grading damage to the greatest extent possible. There's a discussion about snow storage. On the site plan, we show the snow storage. There's a table on there. I can pull up the exact numbers here in my sheet so I can see on this thing. Yeah, so if you look at the plan, we've highlighted the areas in here with this crosshatching as what we intend to be snow storage. Those areas identified, if we scroll back over here, account for, so snow storage provided 21,000 square feet. City code requires one-third of all plowed areas. We identified that amount as 14,00612, and we're providing more than that. Now, if you look at the areas, you'll see how insignificant the areas we've identified are to the rest of the plan. They're very small, they're quaint, they're not in the driveways, they're tucked in the little corners. I get it, snow storage is not, everybody has doubts about snow storage. And I can stand up and say for this specific project, there is plenty of area to store snow. We shouldn't be concerned about that remotely. You look at these little areas and you look at all these areas around here, we have ample area for snow storage. There's some discussion about drainage onsite and offsite, detention basin sizing and things like that, as well as the preliminary grading. On our grading sheets, we've identified shallow swales around the perimeter of the property, which is intended to catch that water, the stormwater and any surface runoff and divert it to our detention areas and ultimately make it to the northeast corner of the site, which is where the water wants to naturally go. So if you look at the grading sheets in our application, you'll see a little dashed line with dots. And it's indicated as a perimeter swell with the intent of collecting that water, getting it to the lowline areas where we intend to manage it and then preventing it from going onto neighboring properties. I think that I covered everything that I had identified, but if you guys have any specific questions for me, I can answer them now or after this.
Miss, the setback between 17 and 20 where that pathway might tend to be removed. It is.
Then it's a minimum of 10 feet between adjacent buildings as well. But that's about the, or 40, 45, 45 feet.
To Wildwood?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Greg. What Greg just demonstrated much more compellingly than I can express in words is important to recognize. It's a preliminary subdivision, flat application, a preliminary planned unit development plan. Does that mean all of the issues you've heard about haven't been addressed? No, they have been addressed at the preliminary level to establish feasibility, code compliance, protection of neighboring properties, and have been reviewed by Morgan. We only got Morgan's review letter yesterday, which is, which is fine because as she indicated, it's a fairly standard letter. And it does exactly what we would expect, which is to identify the issues that need to continue to be worked on as we move forward to the council and as we move forward to final plat and building permit. But what's important from my perspective is the issues of grading, drainage, snow storage that you've heard about are addressed in this application and are specifically addressed, as Greg indicated, in the, in the preliminary engineering drawings to demonstrate code compliance and feasibility. Will those get further iterated? Of course, you know, you've been around this process as the engineering goes forward. Those will get further iterated into final plans, which she has to approve, which is always a condition of approval and which we have no issue with whatsoever. So a couple of questions that Greg touched on. What, how much of the infrastructure will have to be done on the front end of this project? Our hope, and couldn't agree more with Ms. Prince, would be that the infrastructure can be phased. That's essential in engineering issue. And if we can get concurrence with Morgan and with the sewer district, that would be ideal. As Ms. Prince indicated, that would also be ideal for the condominium owner's perspective as well. If in fact that can't happen, then upfront money is going to have to be spent on infrastructure instead of units, and that's what will have to be done. Those are the engineering issues that will get resolved as we move forward. You see the phases and you see the goal of phasing the infrastructure, but those are engineering issues. As Greg indicated, we're optimistic that that's feasible to phase the infrastructure, minimize the disturbance to just as buildings are built. But those are issues to be worked out as, as we move forward with the applications. Right, so I mean, Dave asked about picnic gathering area, would it be open to the public? Pathways, the current intention of the applicants is that it would be on both counts. We've got to work through with Kurt and your committee. The biggest concern about an area like the picnic gathering area as far as public accessibility is liability. And that's always a concern with these park-like areas inside of a development. That may mean, as is not unusual, that there will be hours in which they won't be available to the public. But the intention is to make those available to the public. The I want to reemphasize that the project complies with the setbacks along the entirety of the boundary with the Wildwood condominiums and complies with the height restrictions throughout the project. So neither of those are being alleviated. And there has been a maximum effort made to preserve existing trees in that area as much as possible to screen, in fact, the view from one structure to the other. But the structures as proposed are fully code compliant and as are the setbacks. We've talked about snow storage, we've talked about drainage. Greg did a very good job of covering that. I don't need to spend more of your time on it. Don't know if the pathways will be plowed, and I'm not going to make a promise at this point as to whether they will or not. It's unusual in this context to have those kinds of pathways plowed in the winter, but I don't want to say they can't be or they can be. And that may also be a topic we'll need to discuss with, with.
Kurt, have you been here, Kurt? Pardon me? Did you meet with Parks and Rec?
No, there've been some discussions with Kurt. But the, but now that we've sort of crystallized the notion of using the picnic area, gathering area for partial parks compliance, Dave will need to do that and get the input of your committee prior to going to the city council. Same with when the, when the road will be completed. I think Chairman Lyons, you asked about that. Will it need to be completed all the way out? Greg addressed the fire issue as far as the first infrastructure phase. Again, that's an open question as we work with Morgan, as we work with the sewer district and the fire department. Will that road need to be pioneered out and when? And whatever the resolution of that is, is what will have to be done. The hope again is, and I think Greg's done a good job of analyzing that, that at least through the first infrastructure phase, it won't have to be. Because you've got the loop up top that's close enough to satisfy the fire department's requirements for emergency access. Again, heard from Greg, the whole goal here is to be responsible, to be code compliant, to maximize to the extent possible every single dollar we can to be used to build units and get people in them. But that, that being said, the project has to be code compliant, has to satisfy Morgan, has to satisfy the sewer district. So that's just the reality of the world vision.
Commissioners, any other questions for Steve or anything else on the application? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Morgan, Meredith, anything else you guys want to add before?
As Steve noted and as Dave noted, this hasn't been the Parks and Rec advisory committee. Brian had a habit bringing before we got to planning and zoning. But we're able to do it prior to city council if there are tweaks such as what is the language for public access and how does this commission feel about making the alleviation to the parks requirement in general? That's kind of important guidance before we go and have that conversation. And then I think that, that as Greg mentioned and as Steve mentioned, as we gain experience with these preliminary plats, some of them, it takes a lot more engineering information to find feasibility. And some of them, it takes a lot less engineering information to understand the feasibility. So in this case, when we're talking about, is there adequate space for snow storage and drainage areas? We have the shaped pictures on the site plan, but we don't necessarily have the crazy calculations and data tables that you see sometimes next to the lake. And that's just a matter of confidence in whether it's possible and whether there's space and kind of stuff. So you'll see different degrees, but this is the type of site that has a lot of room. So there's room to wiggle around with it. And then the other part that's interesting for the public to know is that engineers especially, they have an obligation to actually have a mathematical degree of confidence when they draw squiggly pictures that things are possible because they have to get the math right later. It's a, it's a very big rule and somebody gets mad if they don't. So that's why we say we let the engineers do the math. That's what I have.
Commissioners, any other questions for Meredith or Morgan before we go to deliberations?
Oh, and you might note that I don't think I have visit Parks Rec Advisory Committee as a condition of approval. So if you'd like that to be cemented in stone, add it as a condition of approval.
Well, that's. All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, with that, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Okay, Commissioners, discussions.
Chair Lyons, I'll have to recuse myself. This is Dana.
Okay.
Dana used to work for St. Luke's, so.
Used to work for?
Yeah.
Is that a reason for disqualification?
I believe because it was during the time of like design and.
Oh, so she was for, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the hospital board, right Dana?
I worked for the foundation.
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay. Okay, not a problem. Duly noted.
I'm just happy to, Crestline explained some of the preliminary work that they've done, especially, you know, hearing the concerns of the neighbors on snow storage and drainage. And it kind of seems like they have their arms around that for the most part. You know, the water loop, I, I think the hydraulic calculations and what the city can provide, you know, will inform how far, you know, whether they're able to contain it within the first phase or not. That makes sense to me. The fire loop turnaround, I think, to me, that, that phased approach, hearing that, you know, gives me confidence that, that that phased piece of it all works, you know. It's an indicator that the legwork has been done early on on this, you know. And then, you know, I, I do like the pedestrian pathways there. I think more and more, especially during our winter months, that, you know, having an opportunity for folks to get out and move, especially those that, you know, maybe can't ski or, you know, that, that kind of stuff. So to be able to stay connected with the community that way. So I like it. And I think, you know, I'm hap, I'm happy and I'm confident hearing, you know, through, you know, store, snow storage and drainage and, and that, you know, that a lot of the final details will be packed down through the engineering and through the rest of the design process. So that's my, my two cents.
Yeah, I think they addressed quite a few of the issues. I could see maybe some discussions with them having with the neighbors there as far as the walkway or the pathway behind the units 17 through 20. But I think that could be dealt with between the parties since it's not necessarily needed for the requirement. I don't know if it really does anything with the trees, but I think that's minimal. The rest seem to be a pretty decent distance away overall from the other units. I think it could be worse. And I think with the spacing, can definitely have some more open space than some other ones that we've seen in the past where they really tried to squish every possible unit in. I'm happy to see that there's actually a little less than what could be done in there. I know we had, when we were doing the rezoning, there was some discussion or comments made about trying to even do the higher density in there. So obviously, we have not done that. So this keeps that less density and more of the open space there. So and obviously, we all know the, know the need of, of the units. I think they've done a pretty good job. And again, this is kind of the preliminary phase. No Morgan will be very busy on this one, making sure that Wildwood doesn't flood, hopefully. And got plenty of space to keep the snow. Oh yeah, I think for all looks pretty good.
But it also seems like their development agreement does a good job of tying it together as it goes forward, as the fundraising. You know, you, you build the infrastructure you can in the first phase. There's some fertile ground there to do some of the initial stuff. But that, that development agreement looking at it, looks like it's, you know, it's competent enough to keep things together as, as the rest of the development gets built out too.
Dave, what about your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, so going through it, like the, the big concerns that I was hearing and, and that kind of pop out to me are the snow storage, the drainage, the grading, the topography and the phasing and all of those things. I don't, I don't think I have, I, I need to trust Morgan and the engineering team to, to do the math, you know, crunch the numbers, figure that stuff out. And note, trust that that's part of the process in, in the development of it. The only other thing I was thinking. The only other thing I was thinking is, you know, if that pathway behind, you know, that seventeen kind of set of buildings, if, you know, Westwood doesn't want that there, maybe they could replace it with some trees for some screening just to, you know, you know, give a little bit more on that end. But otherwise, yeah, I agree that the applicant did a great job of addressing a lot of the concerns that were voiced and were brought to the attention. And it's obviously a much needed type of development in our community. So that's where I'm at. And I think we need to add a condition that it should go in front of Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. But that's where I'm at.
Yeah, just saying what Liz says, just add that condition to go in front of the Parks and Rec Advisory. Otherwise, yeah. Right?
I am so happy to finally see a workforce housing development that is actually affordable to workforce. It's been, we have so many developers come in, three quarter of a million dollar house is not affordable for a workhouse. So the second part is finally, somebody's finally figured out that modular building works, although I'm a little discouraged that it's the same as stick built from what I heard earlier. And yes, being on Parks and Rec for several years, it's like one seems to be backwards. So I would really the alleviation for parks requirement or in lieu of, I would like to have pulled out or talk about a condition of approval to go before. I think going before Parks and Rec Commission doesn't guarantee that these pathways are all internal. They are not probably going to be used by the public. However, these residents will dump out onto the public parkway pathways. Riverfront Park is less than a mile away. Hospital workers are generally fairly fit, so I imagine it's going to be the reverse. These units will use public facilities more than the public will use these facilities. I would really like to see that alleviation removed.
Without going into full details of open a meeting again, what exactly was the amount of alleviation?
I would need to recalculate with the removal of that unit seventeen to twenty section, but it's about point two acres. So the full requirement is one point zero five acres of parks for that number of units within a planned unit development. And they, I believe, came to about point eight five. So reduction of, I don't know, eight percent, then you're down to point seven some odd. So more of a point three acre requirement. And then.
Plowed all year and their actual public amenities, right? So without some word clarity, I just would like that one. I don't know how we.
I don't know if they can remove it, other than directionless staff to come up with an agreeable amount. I mean, I can see some of the other, you know, obviously the Wildwood condos, I think would utilize some of those pathways. You'd probably get some of the use from Camp Pinewood to come across there. Maybe a little bit of that. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of other homes right in that area that would utilize it.
Right, which is why.
But also to keep it affordable, you got to keep that into consideration as well because that is alleviation or helps towards the alleviation to be, keep it affordable. And they're doing the deed restriction for all units, not trying to get the extra density. So there, I mean, there's got to be some.
Deed restriction comes with a subsidy from the city. So the city's getting double dipped on that.
And I don't know that, I don't know that they've said that they're going to do a deed restriction. I know that one of the conditions is to continue to work with staff to figure out exactly how to codify the workforce housing element, that it's not necessarily a deed restriction.
I think it did mention a deed restriction.
Yeah.
But realistically, the amount that's given is a drop in the bucket for building anything. It doesn't even cover the sewer hookup fee. So, yeah, but having the deed restriction with that meaning units, I think is is a big offering. Because that's, we've had nothing else. We've had nothing else of any size yet.
Again, I'm not the development as a whole, I'm very impressed with it. I just would like this to go through the advisory committee in Parks and Rec before we agree that we give away the parks require.
Okay, I'm just thinking how we can do that, if we can do that and it still comes back where we have an agreement under final plan approval?
It would be more of a, if you decide to make a decision at this point, it would be more deferring, for example, that alleviation to the city council after having spoken to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. But if you agree that you wish to see this item again as the Planning and Zoning Commission after Parks and Rec Advisory, that routine is available too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to revisit it.
Yeah.
But I think city council should have the information. There's not been a success appraisal done or anything.
So you can include in a recommendation that, for example, the economic analysis or appraisal of that gap, whatever needs to be done to analyze that parks requirement and what it would take to need it, go before the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee prior to getting city council. So to put it more briefly, I feel like the motion could be.
This can work, Smith.
Much better thing than me doing it.
Because it's, it's your passion, right?
Yeah. You could require, prior to scheduling a visit to city council, meet with the crack committee that's redundant and review parks in more depth.
So that's an additional condition.
To determine readiness of alleviation to parks.
I had a recommendation that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is if I'm going to the city council anyway.
And I think that this is still procedural in nature. This is our first project experiment where we have now, it'll be three different volunteer or civic bodies working with another public and private entity on a project that is addressing a serious problem in the community. And this is kind of the core test of what that alleviation question is for. Is to what extent does the city wish to extend alleviations from the development code in the decision-making process to be the partner that we're meant to be within housing development? And that's not up to me, that's up to this group.
City council decision.
And it's hard because you don't want to pit housing inputs against each other.
Friend. Use together.
Exactly.
Yes. Let's see, okay, I move to approve DR twenty four twenty seven and SR twenty four ten. The staff recommended conditions of approval with the following modifications. Any decision on a lead and rec requirement shall be determined by city council after, am I going too fast? Evaluation of the economic and infrastructure benefits thereon.
You're good.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's do roll call.
Okay. I have to finish writing on that one. I want to think a little bit more. Chairman Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty.
Yes.
Commissioner Rock.
Yes.
Commissioner Milphy.
Yes.
Dana is abstained and Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
All right. That, it carries. Now, was there, there were still a couple more items.
Was that a recommendations approval or was it an approval of all things? I hate it when I don't.
Approved. I've recommended approval.
So that was for design and scenic route. And recommendations for planned unit development.
We haven't done that yet.
You haven't done that yet. Oh, thank God.
No, no. And we got two more here we got to do. And I was gonna, I was gonna tell Dave to do that one too. Filter out here for a second and we'll finish those other two. I think the drum roll got him. Kaboomed.
I think for this one, we could just say, and the same.
Hold on just a second, we can't hear you, there's pretty good noise here with the crowd.
Yeah, for being. And we still got to conduct business if you can take your party outside.
Okay, Liz, you had something?
Oh, I just think for this one, we can, you know, reference the modification to conditions, you know, from the previous. Right, Dave, I think you stated it perfectly. We don't need to restate it all, right?
I move to recommend, recommend approval of PUD twenty four oh three SUV twenty four oh seven DA twenty four oh two to the McCall City Council. Staff recommended conditions of approval. The following modification attached to DR twenty four twenty seven and SR twenty four ten.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any vote?
Let's do a roll call.
Want to go ahead and do roll call? Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Chairman Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty.
Yes.
Commissioner Rock.
Yes.
Commissioner Milphy.
Yes.
Dana is abstained and Commissioner Thompson.
Yes. Motion is approved.
That's science.
They left before it was even done.
No sense. I think we didn't even click for the last one, right?
No, this one, so it was found out earlier this afternoon that the wrong person received the noticing.
That's right, yeah.
Wasn't actually, the noticing wasn't completed properly. We had been told it had, but.
But we need to make a motion to continue it to the February.
Yep, and we'll just need to be renoticed and.
Renoticed, okay. So we don't have to do anything on that, that's the one highlighted. All right, and so there's no signs.
Correct.
Wanted to mention about the upcoming training date?
Yes, so your homework was come prepared with potential availability in the month of February to go through your annual, for your session. I only received a request for learning materials from one commissioner. So you had to do that home too. What do you want to learn? Discuss.
Commissioners, anything that stands out? Bill, even you're out there, anything that you think stands out that we should consider?
Totally. Later in February is better. That's not what you're asking, but.
Well, if there's anything you can think of that would be wise for us to.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we probably, when we get these bigger applications, it seems like we kind of swim in them a little bit. And I think Meredith and I should probably brainstorm a little bit about how how we can kind of direct you even more efficiently. I mean, we're miles ahead of where we were when we started, but even more efficiently to the issues. Because like, we had some discussion today about alleviations. And I mean, Meredith made an interesting point that I'm sure wasn't lost on you, that there's not really a provision for alleviations in the code. And so when somebody comes with a, with like a really valid purpose, like workforce housing, but they're also asking for alleviations that amount to, you know, a handout. What do we do with that and how do we address that? And I think, I think we can, we can start on that topic. You know, with like, hey, look, here's, here's the considerations. But I think that probably needs to be outside of the context of any actually pending applications. It needs to be a discussion amongst the board, like, hey, how do we feel about these things? Because this isn't the first time, and I know it's not going to be the last, that we're going to get asked for this sort of thing. And I thought we handled it well today, but I think that's a, that's a conversation we need to have. That's all that's really coming to my mind. I think probably I'll do kind of a refresher like on, I mean, so I kind of piped up this today to kind of keep the record clean and just maybe a refresher on why I do that. And so maybe I'll talk about some quasi judicial process, process maintenance of a, of a, of a record and maybe some open meeting stuff. We also had some open meeting issues that came up today and before the meeting. And so maybe a little bit of, just honestly, it's probably just a refresher for most of you on that. That's what's, that's what's in my head.
And did, have we had all of you, well, Sam, you're a returning customer, but we've had all of you through like the arduous hour long, what is a quasi judicial proceeding? Where you are the judge and jury and how to be objective? Do you want to do that again? Or do you want to get like deeper into more fun stuff? And get the highlight reel from Bill on you are the judge and the jury, what does it mean to be objective?
I think that to the new, the new people, if they want that, like, that's extremely important. I would also say short-term rental laws, it's huge and we should be updated often.
State of the state of short-term rentals.
Bill, do you know if there's any updates in the whatever lawsuits going on?
I do, I do know about that.
So I'm pending application.
Yeah. So Michelle had an eight-hour-long deposition that now where there's some rumblings that there's going to be a fight over some of that sort of discovery. The, the court just rescheduled or is likely to reschedule the trial. I can't remember whether I saw it or whether I saw that it had, that it was likely to occur, but it's moving from April to July. That's not going to change much because this, in my view, this case isn't likely to go to trial. It will likely be resolved in summary judgment as a matter of law. You know, my take on, I mean, the politics around short-term rentals is really squarely, but I think we're, our city's pretty solid on the law. But like I said, the politics is the wild card and so, and that does come into play in the courtroom. And so I anticipate that you're going to see out of our office, a motion for summary judgment in the next forty-five days. And probably a hearing on that in probably the next fifty or sixty.
All right, and have you heard anything from the, I know they're just getting started, but they had something in front of the legislature last year that didn't come out of committee. Has there been any rumblings on that? I haven't heard anything on it.
Rumblings, yes. I haven't seen anything really solid on that. I think Michelle may have some input on that. The resort cities, I know have been working on something, but I, the last I heard, it was kind of stalling out. I, all of the, sort of the, the pre pre-legislative session summaries that I've read, they haven't, they haven't mentioned anything about short-term rentals, but it's always a hot button issue and it may come up. but it's always a hot button issue and it may come up.
Maybe tentatively have something on that for the training and in two or three weeks, maybe.
Yeah, if there's legislation, if there's legislation, I'll, I'll tell you what it is.
Yeah, I can just tell you, McCall, the city of McCall is part of the Resort Cities Coalition, so that's a group of all the sort of resort cities around, around the state that have a local option tax and are part of this association that we have hired lobbyists. And so the direction after the last session was for the cities, resort cities and the realtors to get together to try to come up with some sort of compromise language. There was an effort to meet and that there wasn't really like draft language. There was actually, the resort cities came prepared to that meeting, as far as I understand it, but there, there wasn't new legislation. That was what that was shown at that meeting. So I think basically our lobbyists are watching that. Hey, Bill, lava hot springs is going to court, isn't that this Friday?
Yeah, I think it does go to hearing on Friday.
So. So that's the other entity that has a short term rental related lawsuit. So that'll be interesting to see the outcome of that as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be watching that one. We sort of have some more proximate fires that we're fighting at the moment than that one, but we're certainly watching it.
How about area of impact and I know.
I owe you all an email, by the way.
Well. Going to grow, told us what, now. Yeah, just, I, I know that's pretty fluid and you never know what Valley County's going to do, but just some gates as to where it stands and who of us loses our job.
Yeah, so we can, just so like this commission is aware, because I'm not sure what you've heard. At the September meeting, the PNZ, the Board of Commissioners and the City Council had agreed to work in the next year on the area of impact boundary to make sure we're in compliance with the state, state law with sort of a public involvement process. Then after that, during, through some land use hearings at the county, we had heard from the county commissioners that they were interested in. They, they mentioned about taking back the impact area and applying Valley County codes. Since that time, we, staff and Commissioner Mopin requested a meeting with our staff with a work plan essentially that showed dissolving the joint commission having a countywide code that would apply to unincorporated Valley County and all of the impact areas around the cities. Nothing formally has, has been stated in public in terms of a joint meeting between the county commissioners and the city council. So the city council did request a meeting and right now we're going back and forth about the scheduling of that meeting and when that might be. I anticipate it'll probably be sometime in February. And so, so it seemed like it was a very dramatic kind of thing from sort of how everybody left that September meeting. And so it's a little challenging because we've been provided information by the county, but it hasn't been said publicly. By the county commissioners. And so I think, I mean, obviously, we've been managing, meaning the city has been managing that area for since nineteen seventy nine. And there's been a lot of planning and effort that have gone into, you know, working with the public on, on that. And so, again, this would be a huge change to how things have been done in the past.
You, you mentioned a resort cities association. Is there a, in Idaho, is there a municipal, a municipal association, which is all city?
Yeah, there's the Association of Idaho Cities that is a membership based group as well. And so they represent basically all the cities.
All cities, yeah.
So they're more specific.
And they have a really good conference every year in the summertime. And so, you know, that's the kind of thing that we should think about if there's anything that, if there are classes that the Idaho Association of Cities is doing that would be valuable to a PNZ commission member, we should look at that.
It would, yeah, would, that would be interesting to, to learn more about. Just because it kind of feels like the state at any point could broad, broad sweep. You know, some of this, some of this stuff like the impact zones and we're kind of left picking up the pieces after decades of, you know, working away and, yeah, collaboration, regional collaboration and all of this stuff. And, and it, it would be interesting to, to learn more, you know, about, about that and its relationship at the state house and, yeah.
Every year we hold our breath.
Hold our breath. There's definitely, I think, efforts to sort of take away some of the authorities of the cities general.
Yeah.
But I think what we could do is like add at the end of every planning and zoning meeting, maybe an update on sort of like lawsuits and because we're in the legislative session, updates so that you guys can kind of track what's happening. Because there's a lot and we can filter through that and, and give you kind of like brief summaries of some of that information because it's, I know it's hard to kind of track if you're not in it.
I think that's great, but also like what can we do?
Or not do.
Or not do.
Well, I think being educated is probably a good start and.
Yeah.
Talk about it because it does seem, you know, maybe at the state level, things that ideologically might seem good are really ham handed when it gets down to, to, to a municipal level. You know, and then the relationship between the county and then we're all kind of beholden to what the state has and, and the way to kind of backfeed into what the legislature is doing. What is there anything, you know, concerning?
Yeah, and I think like the short term rental legislation was a good example of people showing up and all the public testimony that was provided from community members can be really important as some of those things.
Mr. Chairman and team, I've got a seven thirty, so I've got a, I got a hop off. They give another call, so I think we're done, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, have a good night, everybody.
Hey, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Can I just pick one more scab? Store it?
Oh, no, you can't pick that scab.
No, because that's going to be coming up again, I think.
Well, it's not.
Coming here, though.
It's not a healed scab and we don't really know what, it will come back. Potentially the designer review and scenic route might come back in front of you again. Yeah. Not that scab.
So we can't, we can't go on that one.
That was Monday, they went in front of the county, right?
And what we can tell you is what's public, the county commissioners approved the PUD and CFP.
Of course.
Well.
And but they haven't developed their financing conclusions, prove that yet. And kind of the scenic route and designer review is to be determined what the process will look like.
Whether it's us or them.
Um, as they.
Talk about that.
Yeah. As they thought, I know we're going to maybe discuss deviation procedure. There'd be something worthwhile to mention to the council to see if they would want to put something more codified in code of some kind of valuation of what this alleviation is worth versus this or something more definitive that we can utilize.
Yeah, I can bring probably like a planning association memo report on the role of alleviations and amenities. And then take a look at some of the resort cities and other Idaho community amenity and alleviation language and see what directions or options. And then one of the functions of this board is to make recommendations to city council. And it's been a while since we had like a, a code workshop. But this seems to be a, a point of questions often. And I, I hear Bill Nichols, who you don't get to see all the time, always pondering the value of criteria and standards for vague things. Once we have spent a good twenty years in this space of humming and hawing and being like, well, I kind of like it. So, okay, which is not very objective. So he even mentioned this with a completely unrelated, like, how are we managing concessions in the parks? For example, like, when do we need to come up with criteria for what, what is a good concession to the city of McCall? So I think maybe we can look and see if there are examples of criteria for granting alleviations and from what type of thing, like, should those alleviations be directly related to the amenity that they're providing perhaps? I don't know, but it's a good question.
Yeah, we can find anything that, yeah, it's out there already that we can utilize, that would be, I think, good to have with that.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, yeah, you could kind of do a work session on that. And then if you wanted to, you could formalize that through kind of a recommended policy. The city council adopts through like a resolution, so it's not necessarily super rigid and specific like a code, but maybe more of a policy that future commissions and council holders could.
My brain is already going to like a point system.
You want to build.